Good afternoon. Thank you so much for joining us today for our Flag Day meeting of the Phoenix City Council and the Park Central Community Facilities District, which will convene prior to the council meeting. I'll call to order the Park Central Community Facilities District meeting. Will the clerk call the roll?
Board Member Conlin. Board Member Gervais.
Here.
Board Member Guardado.
Here.
Board Member Hodge Washington.
Present.
Board Member O'Brien.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Robinson. Board Member Stark.
Here.
Board Member Waring. Vice Chair Ansari.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Here. We will have a public hearing on the district budget for fiscal year 2324 and the proposed five-year financial plan for the district. I will open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to comment, so I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion on item four?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Roll call.
Gervais.
Aye.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
That concludes our business for the Facilities District Board of Directors. We will adjourn. Thank you for joining us. Now, we will move to the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We'll begin with an invocation from Police Chaplain Harry Sexton.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. My prayer today is based upon Psalm 111:10 that says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. All who follow his instructions have good insight; his praise endures forever." Please pray with me. Oh, Lord and Father, we have come before you today, knowing that according to your holy word, it is you who gives wisdom, and it is from your mouth that knowledge and understanding are found. Help us to acknowledge you in all of our ways, so that you will make our paths straight and true. We know that you designed peace and unity to be something to be sought after, and so, Lord, we beseech you today that you give all those assembled here today the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding that will bring peace in you. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. And now, in honor of Flag Day, I will turn to our Public Safety Chairwoman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Carmen Cota and Elsie Duarte are here to provide interpretation. Would you introduce yourselves?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, my name is Elsie Duarte, and together with my colleague Carmen Cota, we will be servicing as Spanish interpreters for today's city council formal meeting. I will now take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience and review some guidelines. Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la reunión formal del Consejo Municipal. Mi nombre es Elsie Duarte, junto con mi colega Carmen Cota, estaremos sirviéndoles hoy como interpretes a nuestra audiencia de habla hispana. Decíamos pedirles de antemano si van a dar un comentario público, por favor, hable despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada una o dos oraciones para poder interpretarle lo que está diciendo de la manera más completa posible. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the city clerk read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances numbered G-7118 through 7124, S-49790, 49806, 49808 through 49903, and resolutions 22130 through 22132.
Thank you. Will the city attorney explain the role of public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. We'll next go to two items related to swearing-ins. We have our boards and commissions, and have some great longtime public servants who will be sworn in today, as well as some new volunteers. And then, another very special item, we will swear in two municipal court judges, Don Taylor, our chief presiding judge, and Judge Wilbur Hudson III, both of whom have been real innovators in our court system and helped us gain significant national recognition for the work we are doing. So, we'll have both of those swearing-ins, one following the other. We, yes?
All right, could I just say a couple of words?
Perfect. I'll turn to Councilwoman O'Brien.
I would like to very much acknowledge the two judges that we're swearing in today. One, because they are being innovative and have been innovative, but in particular, we have with us Judge Hudson, and I was able to sit in veterans' court and acknowledge the great work that they're doing. So, really appreciate both Judge Taylor and Judge Hudson and all the work you're doing to ensure that our community members do the hard work that they need to do to get better and get back on their feet. So, thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
Well, I haven't sat on the Public Safety Committee for a while, but I was there when Judge Taylor got sworn in and was chosen. So, congratulations in the swearing-in. And we have excellent judges, and we have excellent courts that are operating in very, Veterans' Court and the Homeless Court and everything else within our system. So, congratulations.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we, the vote has already happened on our judicial nominations, but we have not yet voted on today's very important boards and commission nominations. So, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on item one?
Motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. We'll now do the swearing-in. Please raise your right hand and state your name.
Sandra Hoffman.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
Bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge the duties of the office of
Discharge the duties of the Office of the Deer Valley Village Committee.
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming back to serve again.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and state your name.
Hi, Don Taylor.
Aye, Wilbur Hudson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge the duties of the office of
Discharge the duties of the office of Chief Presiding Judge.
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my abilities.
so help me God
So help me God.
Welcome back and congratulations. Thank you so much and welcome back. It was fun for me to swear in the person who swore me in. The city council provides an advisory role to the state of Arizona on liquor licenses. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Motion to approve items three through 22, noting that item 22 was originally recommended for disapproval due to a finance department recommendation of disapproval and has since been revised.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolution, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
All right. Motion to approve items 23 through 150, except the following: items 34, 36 through 41, 50, 53, 63, 79, 81, 86, 98, 110, 149, and 150, noting that item 35 is as revised. Item 68 is requested to be withdrawn. Item 95 is requested to be withdrawn. Item 150 has additional information, and excluding these items for virtual public comment, items 34 and 98. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, there are no other items to exclude. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Item 34 is the Police Implement Marketing Services, RFP, request for award. Vice Mayor.
I move that the city award to the highest-scoring vendor on advertising, Inc., for a five-year term for 1.7 million, and request that city staff present a marketing plan focused on women in order to help us achieve our 30-by-30 initiative to the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee on an annual basis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? Roll call.
There's someone to swear.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Item 36 is a public
I showed a request to speak.
We did not have anyone, we did have someone who wanted to request to speak, but that person was not online.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Most of our speakers today, I think, will be on our sister-city relationship with Medellin, Colombia, so far. Item 36 is a public hearing on the adopted, adoption of the proposed property tax levy, truth in taxation, and adoption of the final 2324 annual budget. I now declare the hearing open. Any comments? We do not have anyone wishing to comment. Close the public hearing. Item 37 is convening of a special meeting of the city council to consider the adoption of the 2324 budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, in accordance with state statute, I move that the regular meeting of the city council be recessed, and the city council convene a special meeting to consider adoption of the budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. 38 is the adoption of the final 2324 annual operating funds budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that item 38, being ordinance S-49813, the final 2023 to 2024 annual operating funds budget, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Item 39 is the adoption of the final 202324 capital funds budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that item 39, being ordinance S-49851, the final 2023 to 2024 capital funds budget, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Item 40 is the adoption of the final 2324 re-appropriated funds budget. Vice Mayor.
I move that item 40, being ordinance S-49814, the final 2023 to 2024 re-appropriated funds budget, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move the city council adjourn the special meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The special meeting is adjourned. I hereby declare the special meeting is concluded, and I hereby reconvene the regular city council meeting. Item 41 is a legally required amendment to the current 202223 budget, allowing the city to close out the current financial year's budgetary accounts and proceed with the annual independent audit. Item 41 amends the 2223 annual operating funds budget to authorize reallocating appropriations.
Mayor, I move that item 41, being ordinance S-49812, the required reallocation of the 2022 to 2023 operating budget appropriations be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Item 50 is the Foreign Language Interpretation and Translation Services. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this contract extension, given that the purpose is to have more time for a procurement process. I very much appreciate our interpreters. It's a very difficult job, and I thank them for their service. That being said, I have heard from many bilingual and monolingual Spanish speakers for, regarding a need for a little bit of a more nuanced interpretation services. Often, testimony at council meetings can be emotional, personal, and very specific to a community member's experience, and we've had constituents tell us that that nuance sometimes does not come across, and that can be unfair to our Spanish-speaking residents. So, I do look forward to exploring additional interpretation services that have maybe a little bit more of this personal or technical translation experience, and have sent over a few options to city staff as well. And with that, I move to approve item 50.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Guardado, please.
Yes. Yes, I also support what the Vice Mayor is saying. I know that I also met with staff about issues and some concerns that some of the residents had. I, you know, I guess I just had a question for Jeff. Jeff, do you think it would be possible to bring, maybe bringing the contract in-house and having them be, maybe, either having them come in maybe an hour before people that are helping us with interpretation, or figure out a different way? Just because I know that as someone that does a lot of translation, you know, when I do it in a world that's, that I understand, it's a lot easier for me to do it than to do it in a different, in a different setting. So, I don't know if there's a possibility where we can bring the contract in-house and have them be workers from the city, or maybe even figure out a way where they could spend a little bit more time with us right before the meeting, just so that everyone can understand what is it that needs to be translated, and everyone feels comfortable doing that?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Guardado and Vice Mayor Ansari, I think your feedback has been heard. I have met with our Communications Director, Dan Wilson, and he's had conversations with, I think, many of you about the concerns. And so, we will be reaching out to the contractor that we work with currently and looking at ways and various options to improve that service, as well as even bringing on additional resources onto that contract as an option in the interim. We'll also look at the possibility of soliciting additional vendors that can provide the level of service that you're asking about. We are conscious about the sentiment that has been expressed from some of the residents, not just in these meetings, but also in the budget hearings over the years. So, we are looking at that. As far as, as far as bringing someone in-house, that's something that we could evaluate as part of program budget when we get to that, that point in the year. But I do think there are some, some measures that we can put in place in the interim that will serve the needs of everybody.
Yeah, that would be great. And look, and kudos to them. I hate translating. That is the, that is the, that is the thing I like to do the least. You know, so kudos to everyone that does it for the city. Like, I have a lot of respect for people that, that take on that, that task that is so difficult, and that it can be very difficult here at the city. So, I'm not, you know, trying to say, you know, be disrespectful to anyone, but yes, whatever we can do to give them the support that they need in, to making sure that we can, you know, help them and be respectful for the hard work that they're doing when they're under that pressure. I get it. It's not easy, but then I also understand the concerns from, from constituents. So, yeah, if we can look into all of those things, that that would be wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call.
This is for item 50. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you. Item 53 is the authorization to adopt the proposed update to pension funding policies. We will have two votes on this item. Councilwoman Stark will not participate in the first one. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve staff's recommendations to adopt the annual COPERS pension funding policy and acknowledge the assets and liabilities of the COPERS plan.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve staff's recommendations to adopt the annual PSPRS pension funding policy and acknowledge the assets and liabilities of the PSPRS plan.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item 63 is the City Prosecutor's Office Domestic Violence Diversion, Positive Alternatives Program, and Cognitive Skills Diversion Program. Do we have, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 63.
Second.
Councilman Waring.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Julie, I, I had asked you a couple days ago, and you wrote me that this wasn't in place of penalties. I just want to confirm that, because I did, I did read what you wrote, and I just want to make sure I understand it. So, I guess I didn't totally understand what you did, right? I, I just, I want to make sure that we're not substituting classes or something for jail time for people who have, you know, frankly, beaten up their kids or something like that. So, maybe if you could give me some assurances, that would be appreciated, and then we'll see where the conversation goes.
Mayor and council member, yes, that is accurate. So, there are a number of criteria that somebody must meet in order to even be eligible for this program, and for instance, there are certain, only certain misdemeanor convictions. So, there's a number of eligible eligibility, and we look at that first. And it also, at times, there is a jail time that is served. It's not necessarily in place of it.
So, so there will never be an instance where somebody would have served time, because what they did, you know, none of it's going to be good in any way, shape, or form, but something was so egregious that they would be, I just, I guess I understood what you wrote, but it still left, it seemed like a little bit of wiggle room. But I think you're telling me, there's no way somebody would have served six months, but because of this program, they're only going to serve three. Is that right?
Mayor and council member, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Julie, is it that they are serving, and then they could get services as they're serving, or is it in replace?
Mayor and council member, it, it could be a little bit of both. So, it, it would depend on the situation, but there might be time where they may have already served some jail time, and then they may also get credit if they go through certain diversion, if they do those things that they are required to do for that, get counseling, do other services. If they complete that, then they might get credit.
So, if I am to serve a year, or 12 months, and I decide to go through this program or this process, then will my sentencing be lowered? Like, I'm there for 12 months, and I go through the program, and it knocks off, I don't know, three months, and I've already served nine months. Does that mean then I don't, the other three months I don't serve?
Mayor and council member, so your jail time might be suspended.
Correct. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. And relevant to this, the council on today's agenda had item 61, which was an intergovernmental agreement with ASU to conduct a study of prosecutorial diversion programs. So, we will be looking at how we are doing on the efficacy of these programs. Anything to add to that?
Mayor and council, that is correct. This was a discussion in one of the subcommittees, asking for some feedback and some further information in regards to our diversion programs. So, we will be looking at doing that study with ASU for each of our diversion programs over the next five years.
Thank you. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Mayor, can I ask another?
We'll go to Councilwoman O'Brien and then Councilman Waring.
So, I just wanted to speak to that. The Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee did request some information regarding the effectiveness of our diversion programs, and at that time realized that we needed some more current data. And so, thank you to staff. We're, we'll be doing that study, and so that we can And so thank you to staff, we're, we'll be doing that study and so that we can be data-driven in the diversion programs that we, we use. I think that the data they had before did show that it was positive, but we wanted to ensure that that was continuing to be the case. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Waring.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. So, so in what you wrote me, Julie, I just, I just, I just had kind of a funny feeling about this one. I'd like to get there and be supportive. But like, one of the items, it says, you're not eligible, not eligible, if the victim is 15 years old or younger and the defendant is older than 25. So if I read this, if I'm 40 and I had a son who was 16, then I am eligible. And that, that just seems a little arbitrary. Is, is there some reason for that specific cutoff?
Mayor and council, so I'm not sure the exact reasons why that, that, that is one of the rules, but I think what they're looking at is if your victim is younger than 15, that that would have to be looked at closer, and that wouldn't be eligible for this type of diversion program.
Yeah. I just, the 16, 17, or 18-year-old is, is still in school. I mean, is definitely not an adult, is certainly not, is physically developed. None of this is good, again, I'm certainly not saying that, but I mean, you know, just having been a 15, 16, 17-year-old, I mean, it's honestly why the NFL and the NBA, you know, have, have, one of the reasons anyway, you know, you're not nearly as fully developed as some 25-year-old or 30-year-old or even 35-year-old. I mean, you're not really going to be able to defend yourself, I mean, there are exceptions, of course, but, but you're not really going to be in a position to be able to defend yourself. And I just, I saw the 15, and that, that was troubling. You know, I, I understand why the police officer who was on duty, so they come out to your house and you attack the police officer, now you're not eligible. I mean, there were several other things why you're not eligible, but that one particularly, you know, stuck out as that probably should be expanded. And obviously, we're also still waiting for more information on this program. So, I mean, I'll, I'll leave it there. Still thinking about this one, but I appreciate you answering my questions, thank you.
Mayor and council, if I may, I would say too that those are the guidelines. So each case is evaluated on the particular situation and whether it would fit. So those, those are, are some guidelines, but we would still certainly look at each case and what the violation was and whether it was a case that we felt, Prosecutor's Office felt, fit this program for diversion.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven, one.
Item 79 is Helen Drake Senior Center Site Development Request for Ward. This is an item in District 5, so I'll turn to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve item 79.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and Councilwoman, any comments?
Yes, please. I would like to thank Titus, Samantha, and the entire team in our Housing Department for their work on this item. When we pitched the idea of colocating senior affordable housing next to our Helen Drake Senior Center, they were excited to work with us to make it happen. I am very proud to have the first of our city-owned parcels identified for housing development in our Housing Phoenix Plan in District 5. This project will bring our community 80 units of senior affordable housing. I am excited to work with the recommended developer, the Richmond Group, to continue the necessary steps to bring this important project forward for our seniors. I know that all of our neighbors are very excited about this. When we went out and spoke with neighbors, we had our Northland Square Block Watch come out and do a lot of those visits, knock down a lot of the doors, a very active block watch that we have in that area. So I'm very proud and very happy to be able to support this. Also want to, want to thank Nick Wood for all of his hard work on this as well, and very excited to be able to support this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Nick Wood is here available to speak if necessary. He has noted is not necessary, especially after hearing Councilwoman's comments. Any other comments? Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Congratulations, team, yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Item 81 is American Rescue Plan Act Community Land Trust Program. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve item 81.
Second. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to express my excitement and enthusiasm for this item. I cannot overstate how important it is that Phoenix has a community land trust now. Homeownership remains out of reach for not only our low-income residents, but for nearly anyone making less than six figures in Phoenix due to a shortage in housing, inflation, and wages that have not kept up with rising costs. This item in particular, for those in the audience, gives $5 million in ARPA funds to Newton Community Development Corporation to serve as our community land trust administrator. And this land trust will be able to acquire properties, rehabilitate homes, and then sell homes to first-time low-income homebuyers. The land will remain in the trust to ensure long-term affordability. I think opening the door for low-income residents to own a home is such a significant step toward building wealth within our most disinvested communities. So I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support this item, and I'm very excited to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a new, new model for us, and it is exciting. It's been a lot of work to get to today, and we hope that this will be one of many tools that we use to address the need for affordable housing in our community. It's been a big day for affordable housing. We've already passed more than 10 items with hundreds of units spread throughout the city. From District 2 to District 8, we have moved forward with housing units, and that really shows the commitment that this council has. All of those votes have been unanimous, and we're looking forward to welcoming new residents as well as making sure our existing residents can afford to continue to live in the city of Phoenix. Councilwoman Pastor.
I am just excited about Newtown Community Development Corporation because they've been around and they, they have a footprint within Arizona and Tempe. I learned about this program many moons ago, only because a woman who was a masseuse, her and I became friends, and she was part of the land trust. And she explained to me how the land trust helped her and her son get to where they are today. She has, has advanced forward in the sense of moving out of that home and leaving it preserved for another family, but this is a great piece that is happening within Phoenix. It's, it's long awaited because it's been years that we've been talking about this. So really appreciate that we got to the final finish line and are crossing, crossing the finish line, so thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Item 86 is authorization to enter into contract with CAS. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 86.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, we struggle with this item. It, it's hard for me to consider supporting the continuation of a contract with CAS as a provider for our homeless shelter. In the, over two years I've been on council, I just haven't seen the, the progress and the forward motion that I think we need to have with our homeless community. When I first joined the council, there was a vote to pay a bill that was over a million dollars in damages on a hotel that we leased out in partnership with them to offer shelter during the pandemic. And last fall, they overestimated their available budget and came to us asking for more operational funds, threatening to shut down if we didn't provide them. There have been allegations about them kicking out people of the, out of the facility and only allowing folks to enter after sundown. Unfortunately, when I asked for data to show the positive strides being made by people, they weren't able to provide that. It didn't appear that the wraparound services that need to be provided to this population is being provided. I know that our staff has made some forward progress, but as a major investor and client of CAS, my hope is that the city of Phoenix would be able to have a positive, more positive working relationship with them moving forward. I know that it has been a struggle lately. I do understand, again, that the, some positive steps have been made since the hiring of the new COO, but we're still not where we need to be as a major investor. We provide millions of dollars every year to CAS, yet we don't truly know what is going on. If we're going to be renewing a contract or give them another contract that is close to $4.4 million, I believe the city of Phoenix deserves a non-voting seat that, on their board, and a well-thought-out budget plan that we are aware of to ensure that the money is being spent in an appropriate manner. It's my hope that expressing these frustrations today, they will be acknowledged and addressed promptly. And for those reasons, I'd like to motion for a continuance to the June 28 council meeting to give staff more time to come to an agreement with CAS. And for the city, I hope to receive that seat at the table that we deserve and a detailed annual budget to ensure that they are not overestimating their annual spending compared to their income. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor.
I, I'm, I know we've had some issues with CAS in the past, and, and I know they have tried to resolve them. Maybe we can have staff maybe briefly give us an update on what's going on. But I'm also okay if you need a continuance for a couple weeks to get a dialogue with CAS.
Is that a second?
Second?
Okay.
I'll second.
Well, welcome our Deputy City Manager, Gina Montez.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, Councilwoman Stark, members of the council. Rachel and I are happy to talk about the work we've been doing with CAS over the last, particularly nine months since the, the new contract. We hear your concerns and, and we share them in terms of some of the outcome, outcomes and performance that we want to see, we really need to see, to help us address the, the issues that we're having with homelessness. We, we have begun, actually, we have been, as, as a councilwoman mentioned, have been making progress and have had a, an improved level of cooperation and coordination with CAS. And I'd like for our Director of Office of Home Solutions, Rachel Millie, to talk a little bit more specifically about what we have going on with them and what we see moving forward.
Thank you, Gina, Mayor, members of council. The most notable improvements, I think, that we've seen with our relationship with CAS over the last year, nine months or so, are monthly meetings with them, their CEO, their new COO, ourselves, Maricopa County, and DES, to go over line by line the goals and outcomes and indicators in their contract. We review it together as a group. The city of Phoenix, Maricopa County, and DES all have the exact same scope of work in our contracts this, this previous year, and so we're able to really analyze those and, and benchmark where they are now that they're at the 600-bed level. We also work together collaboratively with CAS to develop this year's scope of work to make sure that we were, we were not only pushing them to, to have better outcomes and goals, but something that they would agree to as well. The other really noticeable improvement that I've, I've seen is, is really related to our efforts around the Human Services Campus and our, our recent engagement efforts. CAS has been at the table with us, has, has very much been offering shelter beds every time we do an engagement. In fact, on our May 10th engagement, they, when we reached out to ask all of the shelters how many beds we could count on for that day, CAS indicated that they, we could have as many as we needed. So that, that to me was just a huge, huge positive step in the right direction. And then just in, in, also in general, we have seen some improvement in their known exits, which was a, a concern previously from last year to this year. And then we're pushing them further in this, in this proposed contract this year as well to 50% known engagements, or excuse me, known exits.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Vice Mayor, and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, to be honest, I'm a little taken aback by this. CAS is in District 7, and, you know, with all of the different issues going on and with the homelessness crisis that we face, I think delaying a contract for 600-bed shelter that is vital and is full every single night is a huge mistake. But I'd like to talk to staff. We, we meet every other week on homelessness in particular. You talked about the working relationship. Can you tell us how you think your, I mean, obviously, this is on the agenda today. Do you recommend that we approve this contract today?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, for, for exactly that reason. We need these 600 beds to continue this year. We do feel like we've been working in good faith with CAS, specifically over the last few months as well. So yes, we, we can't, we can't jeopardize the beds.
And Councilwoman O'Brien said, you know, that we don't have a seat at the table, or maybe working a few more weeks would give us a seat at the table. Do you feel that we do have a seat at the table?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I could address that question, I think what the councilwoman was referring to is, we had discussed in the past how we can have a direct line to the Board of Directors and, and really having the opportunity, you know, to, to provide information on behalf of the city of Phoenix. And, and so in terms of the relationship with the board, we, we do have a relationship with them. I think we, it can always be improved, and, and, and so I think that's what we're, we've been talking about, we were talking about last fall, and we had not, you know, included that in this particular contract. But in terms of just our working relationship, as Rachel mentioned, it has improved by leaps and bounds from a year ago.
So would you recommend holding this hostage contract with the leverage potentially of having a board seat? Or do you think that is somewhat problematic?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I would really defer to the council in terms of, of, of that question. I will say that as long as we have it by the end of the fiscal year, we would really recommend that we not hold up their funding, you know, past the, past the end of the fiscal year and that we proceed. And if there's a desire for us to discuss additional items, we wouldn't be opposed to that and have the discussion with them this morning that if that were the case, we would be happy to work with them. So we would like it approved today, but we are, we are, we will make it work depending on the desires of the council.
But you all are working day in and day out. We have multiple court orders that are conflicting with one another. We have a lawsuit from ACLU, we have a lawsuit from businesses, and a court order to do block-by-block cleanups. We have a July date, and I know that you guys rely on those beds every single time you do a cleanup. I was at the last cleanup, the CEO, COO, sorry, of CAS was actually present at the cleanup. And again, I know we rely on those beds. Did you, have you, I, I know you have told us before that we are in danger of running out of beds, so we very much rely on these 600 beds that, again, are in, are in District 7.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, it is true. We do, we do rely on the, on the 600 beds, and every bed that we have is, is critical and vitally important to all our efforts around the city and in particular, around the Human Services Campus.
And of the beds that we rely on across the city of Phoenix, when we are moving folks from the zone to beds, what percentage of those would you say are in District 7 and 8?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I don't have an exact number for you, but the majority of our shelters are in District 7 and 8, so I would say a, a good portion.
Okay. With that, I would respectfully ask that my colleagues approve this contract today. I think that it's no easy feat running a shelter of 600 individuals every single night. We have a housing and homelessness crisis in the city, and I think that any sort of, you know, additional accountability or relationship building we want to do with CAS doesn't have to happen on the dais, and that can happen in meetings that I'm sure they are happy to take. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Pastor and then Councilwoman Guardado.
When does the contract end?
Mayor?
Officially?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, June 30th of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2023. And, yes.
And our next meeting is when?
June 28th.
So if we continued it and brought it to June 28th, then there's, we could vote on it, get these questions or answers cleared and be able then to turn it around for June 30th. May?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, as long as it's approved, we would be comfortable by no later than June 28th, we would be comfortable with that.
I, and you, you said as long as it's approved on June 28th?
Yes, we prefer to, to approve it in this fiscal year so that we, they have their approval before we head into the next fiscal year and prior to the expiration of their current agreement.
And then I guess my next question is, I don't think we really have a choice in disapproving it because what other operator would we have in CAS and we would need 600 beds? I guess my question, the other, third question is, is CAS here? Are they here so that we can ask possibly what we're asking for or the councilwoman could ask so that they can say yea or nay or continue it? I need to go back to my board or whatever it is. I'm just asking the questions just to get some clarity on what's going, you know, understanding the, where we're at right now.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, they're not in the audience. However, we have spoken with them this morning and discussed the potential that it might not be approved today and that, that we were hopeful that it would be approved by June 28th and, and they understood that and would like to proceed. Obviously, they'd prefer it be approved today, but they're willing to work with us on additional requests that we might have for the scope by June 28th.
I guess what I'm asking is, are they here today so that then they could answer, is there a possibility to put a non-voting member? Or have, maybe it's not a non-voting member, but be able to have a liaison from the city to go directly, a direct dialogue with, with the board of directors or interaction with the board of directors?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, they are not here in the room today.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado and then Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel, I had a question for you. How often do you meet with CAS in terms of the collaboration that you're, that you're doing with them?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Guardado, we are scheduled to meet monthly. They have been canceled occasionally, but our goal is to meet monthly as a group.
And how, how, how accurate is the information that you feel that you get from them in terms of being able to give reports to the city on how, on how the process is going?
Mayor, members of the council, so the reports that we pull are actually directly from the homeless management information system or HMIS. So it's, it's a, we're, we're comfortable with those reports. We have been working with CAS on some data quality issues, but we're comfortable that what we're pulling and going through with them on those monthly meetings with the county and DES, that those are accurate.
Great. Thank, thank, thank you for that. I, I just don't understand. I think on the one hand, we're saying that we have a crisis, you know, like the Vice Mayor said, we have a couple of lawsuits. And look, I mean, I think we've all, you know, I mean, we've all had different questions and challenges and issues with, with CAS in the past. I know that, you know, I've had to sit down with them many times to figure out a lot of the challenges, a lot of the issues that they were having. And they, you know, may even continue to have as we're working on Project Haven in District Five. I've done a couple of fundraisers with them, you know, we've, we've signed a bunch of letters for them, we've met with the state every time they've asked us to. So it is a very complex issue and I know there are things that both we and CAS could be doing a lot better. I know I had a lot of those questions when I first came onto council. However, they have always had an open line of communication with me and willingness to work in collaboration. I have no issue passing this today. I think we can work with them on any concerns of my colleagues without holding up this item. I, I just think that we're in the middle of a crisis. We have so many people, I think we all see it, we all get the phone calls, we all hear about what's happening on all the different corners in all of our districts. I think that this is the number one issue we continue to hear about. So I'm very concerned that we don't pass this today. We need to put some urgency around this. I think, I think there's, I, I agree with you, Councilwoman O'Brien, that we should figure out, how do we, if we want a seat at the table, how do, how do we get there? But I just don't think that's a reason to hold back this, this item. And I would strongly recommend that we pass this item today just because we, you know, it is a state of emergency, it is a crisis. I, I think that, you know, everyone is working really hard to come up with other solutions. Everyone's trying to do their part. So I would strongly recommend that we go with, with the original motion so that we can continue with the funding and move forward with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Aside from the monthly meeting that you've discussed that you have scheduled with CAS, what is the other involvement that the city has with the operations or the implementation at CAS?
Mayor, members of the council, so we speak with them very often. As I mentioned, specifically on our human services campus engagements, we're talking to them in the days leading up to each one of those engagements, not only the two that took place in May, but the ones that took place from December onward. We, we have an open line of communication with them. In fact, I was just on the phone on a different issue with their COO yesterday. So we, we speak with them often.
Okay. Do the other cities have a, I mean, my concern about having a seat on the table is from an optic standpoint, the city of Phoenix is viewed as it's our asset, our liability. And I think the more that we're engaged with that, we kind of offset any other potential help from our other regional partners. And I think from a regional, I think this problem is a regional problem and we want all of our stakeholders involved in that conversation. So do other cities or other municipalities have an active role on their board?
Mayor, members of the council, no, they, they do not currently. There's not a, a current seat for other, specifically for cities or towns, no.
And do you believe a non-voting seat would have a, an impact on being able to guide the operations of CAS in a way that we don't currently have?
Mayor, members of the council, I, I think it would provide us some insight in the communication that's going to the board of directors certainly, but I don't know that it would have an impact on the operations. But we would gain insight for, from what's happening at that board level.
And what type of, and do, is there another manner for us to get this level of insight other than a board seat?
Mayor, members of the council, I think we, we propose putting some additional language in the contract that would provide maybe some, some of the additional information that we could gain from having an observation role at the board, specifically transparency on finances is, is I think one of the main concerns.
Is there anything that prohibits us from adding that to the current contract as it stands right now with respect, rather than having to necessarily ask for a, a new seat at the table?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, members of the council, there, there is nothing that precludes us from working with them, with the authority that you give us. You're not approving the, the exact contract language today. And so we would have the opportunity to do that. And then just to, to provide some additional information, one of the other things that we had suggested and can also pursue is providing additional technical assistance. You asked about the operations and our involvement in the operations and we had recommended that we have some staff that do some observations at different times of the day and night and be able to provide them feedback on the services and work in partnership with them. And that is another thing that we would, we could potentially add to the agreement.
And then worst case scenario, if this isn't passed, do we have a backup plan for the 600 beds that we would be losing at CAS?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, the CAS is, they operate the 600 beds. So the funding that we provide to them is approximately 17% of their budget. And so as far as a plan B for us, we need, we need the beds. So there aren't another 600 beds somewhere else that we could replace with that. But I think it also would impact their operations and ability to administer those beds.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I add something?
Uh, yes, Assistant City Manager Base.
Mayor, members of the council, one option that you could exercise is to approve the contract with stipulations as you've discussed today as a requirement. And then if for some reason CAS does not agree to those terms, we could bring that back to the council.
Yeah.
We'll go to Councilwoman O'Brien and then Councilwoman Stark.
Please go to Councilwoman Stark. She doesn't have an opportunity.
Sorry, Councilwoman Stark.
So let's go over the stipulations again. So it would be, we really would talk about how they routinely meet with us, but also that we would have more voice and direction or I'm trying to think of how we would craft them. So that they're enforceable. I guess I'm putting my planner head on thinking about enforceability and...
Rachel, to articulate what the stipulations would, would look like?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, so we, we've drafted a few of the stipulations that we'd like to see perhaps in the contract. The first is what Deputy City Manager Gina Montez mentioned is having that ability to do some observation day and night to have our staff go and, and provide not only observation but assist, uh, technical assistance there, to continue those monthly meetings moving forward with all of the major funding partners, to ask for transparency in finances, getting monthly budget to actual reports submitted to our office as well as the county and DES to review, to have all board of directors' finance reports submitted to us for review. And then finally to, to request a, a financial sustainability plan for this upcoming fiscal year so that we know that we don't get into the situation we were in earlier this year where there was a question about the ability to continue the entire 600 beds.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Those are awfully complicated stipulations. So I, I feel confident we are going to approve this contract, but I would also be comfortable waiting two weeks just to have that in writing and to get, get feedback on that. It does seem like we're going in the right direction and the conversations we've had with CAS have been really beneficial to improving the partnership and performance. We have, for example, a priority of mine has been the caseworker ratio and I think we've seen pretty significant improvement in that area. I love caseworkers, I think they work miracles and, but the more time they have with each individual, because each individual has a personal story, to really get to know it and, and navigate to solutions, that is good news. I do think the governance is not just CAS on the human service campus. The human service campus itself has made some pretty significant changes in their board, which might also some sort of have a real impact particularly on District Seven, but on governance more generally. And so we ought to have this conversation with all of our major partners as well and try to be consistent because the human service campus is much more than the folks at CAS. So, Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you. Do, do other cities have contracts with CAS like the city of Phoenix does?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, they do receive funding from some other communities and we know specifically that Maricopa County and DES, we have now consistent scopes of work. And I'll ask Rachel to add what she knows on the other cities.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Councilwoman O'Brien, yes, there are several cities that fund them to, to a minor extent, like under $50,000 per year, but yes. And, and then that's for the operations of the single adult shelter, but other cities do fund some of their capital improvements as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Lori, you said that if we approved it with stipulations, additional stipulations, if they don't agree to those stipulations and by June 28th, would this item come back? What, how would we proceed?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman O'Brien, we would bring the item back to discuss the terms that they would agree to and then see if the council is comfortable with that.
Okay. And then Rachel, your list of items, did that include a non-voting seat at the board?
Councilwoman O'Brien, it, it did not.
Okay.
But let me know.
Thank you. I, I didn't think so, but I wanted, you had a good list, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't not hearing something. So I, I agree with my fellow council members, we, we are in a crisis, but I would also disagree that having monthly meetings and these open lines of communications and these positive forward steps are the, the same as having a seat at the table with the board of directors, which is who the CEO or the executive director, their, their title, reports directly to and understanding what kind of communication they're getting, which, which is why I feel so strongly about us having that seat at the table, especially given we are nearly a fifth of their operating budget. I would be happy to modify my, my motion to approve with the stipulations as provided by Rachel, including having a non-voting board member seat for the city of Phoenix as picked by the city of Phoenix, that I would want us to have the ability to pick. So I'm happy to change my motion to be that.
Okay, the second confirms.
And I'm fine with that, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Do any members of the council need clarification on the motion on the floor? Okay, so...
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, I do. It's Councilwoman Guardado.
Okay. And maybe we should start with Rachel clarifying?
Mayor, members of the council, would you like me to read the stipulations again? Okay. So first and foremost, that the Office of Home Solutions staff will be able to conduct observations day and night of their ongoing operations at the single adult shelter. Number two, that we will have monthly meetings to review performance outcomes and indicators. Number three, that there be transparency in financing, finances where they provide us their budget to actual reports each month. Number four, that all board of directors' finance reports be submitted to OHS for review. Number five, that they submit a financial sustainability plan for this current fiscal year. And then number six, the non-voting board member seat to be selected by the city.
Thank you. Roll call. Guardado?
So I'm sorry, so then what we're saying then is that we're voting to approve this with these stipulations?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Hodge, Washington?
I'll say yes.
Thank you. O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Can I explain my vote?
Please.
I will be voting yes, but I just hope that in the future, given that this is an issue that I deal with day in and day out and the, the shelter is in District Seven, I would hope that we could have a conversation in advance about this to be part of the process. Thank you, yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Thank you. We next move to item 98, which is to enter into a sister cities agreement with Medellin in Colombia. Very excited to support this item. We have two individuals to speak who have helped make it possible and will begin, actually we'll begin with a motion, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 98.
Second. A motion is second. We will welcome Oscar De La Salas, followed by Nestor Guzman.
Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor Ansari, members of the council, city staff. This is a very unique opportunity for all of us Colombians like myself. Before I start my remarks, I want to say, first of all, thank you to some of the board members from sister cities that are here with us, Jackie Pabenberg, Francesca Miller, and Louis Luhann. This is a quite unique opportunity for my home country, Colombia, and for the city of Medellin. We are celebrating the 200 years diplomatic relationships between the two countries and this sisterhood will be the first one amongst, or of many other cities that were coming into, into sisterhood. You may know the city of Medellin from many highlights, or highlights in the news during the eighties of the nineties as a very violent city and a city that was almost demolished in a country that had a very difficult time with the world of drugs. The city since then had created a task force with their own citizens and through resiliency has moved forward to a new city that today bets on clean energies, similar to our city of Phoenix, mobility and transportation by EV vehicles and automated vehicles, which we're going to be bringing our fantastic Waymo proposal to the city of Medellin. And they have recovered their Rio Medellin 100% to a point that is almost drinkable. And we're going to be learning from them about how to take... about how to take care of a Rio Solado. There's many other aspects of collaboration between these two cities that are coming up through the sisterhood as bio-research and innovation, as well as sustainability. So, as you see, there's many factors of commonality between our two cities. I just want to close, as my time closes, by saying that this sisterhood is an incredible celebration for us Colombians, and there's 10,000 of them in Arizona watching this livestream at this moment. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. We'll turn next to Nestor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I thank you for the forward thinking that you always had in joining in with several cities around the world in friendship. Medellin would be very proud to be a sister city with Phoenix. Two beautiful cities coming together for future mutual benefit, not only culturally, technology, business development, and intercity commerce. We ask the Council to please approve this ordinance. We, as Colombians, are extremely excited. We're going to have the very first cultural exchange, bringing Boteros to the Phoenix Botanical Garden. And as you know, Botero is a world-known artist. And we're going to have a great exhibition to start off this new relationship between Phoenix and Medellin. Thank you very much, and I hope that you all approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you both for that important testimony. This will be our first sister city in South America. We have a strong South American community in Phoenix, and it is growing. This will be a wonderful opportunity to really celebrate so many of the partnerships and areas we have in common with our new sister city, including a focus on technology and entrepreneurship. They have a very robust bioscience research community, and I think there are important synergies there. We already heard in the testimony about the shared interest in mobility and sustainability. I think we can learn a lot from each other. They are very focused on technology jobs, and that is one of our huge and important sectors in the city of Phoenix. So, this will be a great partnership. Want to thank the sister cities staff and commissioners who have been working so hard to bring this forward. The government of Colombia approached us, as well as other cities in the United States, as part of celebrating the 200th anniversary of diplomatic relationships. And it's very impressive how quickly we were able to move so that this could go forward. So, thank you to Nestor, Oscar, everyone who has been working to make this possible, including our own team at the city of Phoenix. Additional comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited about this as well. A little over a year ago, in March of 2022, I had the honor of meeting with Colombia's Ambassador at the office in Washington DC to talk about the potential for an exciting friendship between our cities. Medellin is an incredible world-class city, and this is historically significant as our first sister city in the global south. We have many opportunities to learn from each other. Want to give a shout out to Oscar, who helped facilitate a meeting we had with a university in Medellin last year to talk about the incredible work that they've done on the riverfront, mirroring our own Rio Solado revitalization plans. And as has been mentioned, I think we can also take many cues from their expansive public transit system. So, I'm very excited for the sisterhood and can't wait to visit one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Sorry.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
I just wanted to also say that the city of Phoenix and the city of Medellin, Colombia, stand at a unique crossroad of opportunity. As the world becomes increasingly interconnected, it's imperative for cities to embrace the importance of expanding international relations by joining as sister cities. By fostering collaboration and establishing strong ties between Medellin, Phoenix, both cities can unlock a multitude of benefits for their communities. And it is for these reasons I'm extraordinarily pleased to be supporting this today.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Pastor?
Felicidades. What I have to say is I'll be in Medellin for a wedding. Our daughter is marrying a Colombian, and we will be having the wedding over there. So, I will be there in personal experience and also be able to watch my daughter get married. Congratulations.
Wow, congratulations to you.
Roll call. Guerdado?
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
Yes, I'm very excited to be able to support this sister cities. I think we've done some really great work with Hermosillo and with a lot of our other sister cities. Thank you so much, Oscar, for all of your leadership and your hard work. As someone that has some staff members in her office that are partially Colombian, we're super excited to be able to support this today. So, very excited to be able to vote yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
I have been to Colombia. It's wonderful. Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero. By unanimous approval, we welcome our new sister city in Colombia. Woo-hoo! Item 110 is Neighborhood Block Watch Grant Program Awards. Councilwoman O'Brien?
I move to approve Item 110.
Second. And Councilwoman O'Brien, comments, followed by Councilwoman Guerdado.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I wanted to make sure to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for the exceptional work that was contributed by each member of the Neighborhood Grant Application Review Committee. It takes them hours to review all of the applications and score them. Their dedication, expertise, and commitment to the task at hand have helped to identify projects with significant impact on the communities we serve. The time and effort invested by each member in reading, rating, and approving the grant applications is invaluable. The careful evaluation, thoughtful deliberation, insightful feedback play a pivotal role in ensuring that we select the most deserving projects that have the potential to create positive change in our neighborhoods. Their collective expertise and diverse perspectives brought depth and thoroughness to the evaluation process. The thoroughness with which they reviewed each application, assessing its merits, and considering its potential impact exemplifies their unwavering commitment to excellence. By dedicating their time and expertise, they've empowered the Council to support and invest in projects that will make a real difference throughout our community. And I noticed that we have two of our members here, Carmen and Stan. So, thank you very much for your work. And if we could just, thank you. That's well-deserved work, so.
Hard work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guerdado?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as well, Carmen and Stan, thank you guys so much for all of your hard work and everyone that's part of the Block Watch Grant Oversight Committee. It takes real dedication to do the work that you guys do to making sure that, at the end of the day, we're keeping our neighborhoods safe and that we continue to bring neighborhoods together to do this great work. Today's item will bring over $180,000 of city investment to neighborhood efforts in District 5 to address crime. This year's District 5 grant recipients are an impressive collection of block watch groups that continue to work hard ensuring our residents and their families have safe neighborhoods. I am extremely appreciative of all of their hard work. I do want to give a special recognition to one of our new District 5 block watches, Vista Diamante, which covers the neighborhood just north of the Camelback Ranch Spring Training Facility. I also want to personally thank Alan Gogard from the Villa de Paz Block Watch for all of his work helping Donna and her neighbors in Vista Diamante set up their own block watch and apply for this grant opportunity this year. Again, very appreciative of this program. I'm very excited to see how new groups get established and how everyone continues to learn how the city runs and how can they use the city and all of our tools to making our neighborhoods a lot safer. So, I'm going to be very happy to be able to support this item today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Thank you. That's all. Good work.
Thank you. I'll join in thanking our commissioners who do such excellent work and our block watch leaders who put a lot of time into both the ideas and writing it up and then executing it. It's wonderful to see so many programs that help kids and make sure that we address public safety in that area, as well as just the unique needs of different neighborhoods. This is a very flexible tool, and it allows neighborhoods to come together, build community, and think about what would make a difference for their neighborhood. It is backed by sales tax, and so, one of the things that is on the governor's desk right now is whether to cut some of that budget from us. And so, a good reminder that the decisions that are made at the legislature impact whether we can do great things with our block watches. Any additional comments? Roll call. Guerdado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero. We next go to Item 149, Certificate of Appropriateness: Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission's Decision. We will begin with a staff report, including, led by our Planning and Development Director, Josh Bennerick, and we will mostly be delivered by Kevin, who works on our historic preservation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. Yes, with me today is Principal Planner Kevin Wait in our Historic Preservation Office. Kevin will go through the presentation.
All right, there we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision on Certificate of Appropriateness Application, HPCA 2200311, which is for the property at 711 West Glen Rosa Avenue. Located on the southeast corner of Glen Rosa and 9th Avenue, this Tufta Stone Ranch-style home was built in 1949. It is classified as a contributor to the Woodley Historic District. The application is to construct a 96-square-foot addition in front of the existing attached garage to convert the garage to livable space and to modify the existing roofline. This slide shows the existing floor plan on the left and the new floor plan with the front addition on the right. This slide shows a photo of the front of the existing house with the proposed changes in the drawing below. Note the tarp on the roof that is covering a hole from when a tree fell on the house. The proposed roof repairs would eliminate the staggered inset gabled roof over the garage, which is symmetrical with the staggered gable at the opposite end of the house. Staff recommends against changing the staggered gables as it would impact the balance of the design and adversely affect the home's historic integrity. Shown here are the proposed east and west elevations. The west elevation in particular shows that the proposed frame addition would project beyond the front facade of the Tufta Stone House, contrary to historic preservation standards. The standards recommend that additions be located at the side or rear of the historic home, rather than at the front. Staff originally recommended approval of the application subject to nine stipulations, which are listed in the staff report. The Historic Preservation Hearing Officer approved the application on March 1st, 2023, subject to the six stipulations that are shown here. The Hearing Officer's decision was appealed by the owner's representative on March 2nd. The owner objected primarily to stipulations 1 and 2, that the roof be rebuilt with the staggered gables, and that the addition be moved to the side or rear of the historic home. Historic Preservation Commission heard the case on April 17th and upheld the Hearing Officer's decision by a seven-to-one vote. Their decision was appealed by the owner's representative on April 24th, which takes us to our hearing today. And so, the recommended council action is to uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision on the certificate of appropriateness. Alternatively, the council could reverse the Historic Preservation Commission's decision and deny the application, or you could modify the Historic Preservation Commission's decision, either adding or deleting stipulations. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Kevin. We will open the public hearing. We have the two speakers. You have five minutes to split, however you wish. So, one person can't speak the entire time, you can split it. Will be, call up Patrick Holman and Jan Ashford. Open the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for having us here today and listening to something so small and humble compared to the big issues that you guys are resolving here for our city. I'd like to thank staff. I think Historic Preservation Staff has done a fabulous job with this project. I'm an instrument for Ms. Ashford's desires with this house. When she approached me to help her with her house, she had a ponderosa pine tree fall upon the house. It's evident by the tarp that you saw, damaging the roof, damaging the structural integrity of the project. I think there's two things I just want to address. One is historical integrity. The historical integrity of that house, in many ways, in my opinion, as an architect, has been compromised by the weight of that tree and what has been done to a home that was non-conforming with today's standards for structural integrity of the roof. What we build back, I would argue that it's going to be very difficult to maintain the historical integrity of something that has been damaged and impacted so harshly. So, the other thing I'd like to talk about is historic standards. We, the historic standards do reference a particular diagram that shows and talks about the degree or standard of protrusion beyond the front facade of a house. We are proposing, my client wants to put a restroom on the front of a garage, and it's affecting 20% of the facade of the entire building. The rest of the structure will remain the same. This 20% will mirror, other than the roofline, because of drainage issues, exactly a garage. And if you look at the front elevations, you can see some of the lines that's not denying what was there in the past and is trying to protect it. So, we're going out seven feet. Diagrams utilized and shown to the public in the Historic Preservation documents show a 20 to 25-foot extension. So, I just professionally differ with what is being held up as a standard versus what we, my client, is proposing with her house. So, Jan's in her 90s. She needs to be able to move into her house. We have a housing problem in this city. Let's get her house fixed. Thank you.
Anyway, I'm used to giving a big, long talk, and I talk long, and I talk loud, and I always have something to say. But I will try to make this short and precise. It's taken me almost 16 months to get to this place to talk to people today. I am a licensed plumbing contractor, certified 30 years on knowledge of sewer and drain. I assumed when I bought this house, because there was ABS plumbing coming out the window and ABS cleanouts in the backyard, that the 50-year-old house had had its sewer replaced. Well, I believe that God takes care of me, and when that tree fell on the house, it was to let me be aware that the cast iron plumbing that comes through the roof for the vent was old, 50, well, I guess it's almost 60 years now. I made a good living replacing that kind of stuff in my years of business. I made a good living replacing that kind of stuff in my years of business, but I had a plumber come and run a camera down the sewer. There's no sewer there. So to do what they want me to do would be to jackhammer from the kitchen, across the kitchen, across the bathroom, across the garage, and across the 20-foot patio to get to the sewer, jackhammer, saw cut, dig it up, dig it out, take it out of the house, then replace it, and then put the new bathroom in. Or the kitchen sink line that showed out the window being ABS, which made me assume we had a new sewer, would be, it comes out the kitchen window, it goes across the driveway and to the city sewer. So all I'd have to do is add a five-by-seven or a 12-by, I've gone for seven feet. I can't get into the story of why I'm asking for seven feet. It's because the bathtub's only five foot, but we need it for the extra plumbing. But by doing that, all we have to do is dig up 24 inches of concrete, put in a sewer, build a bathroom over it, and be done. One costs about $18,000, and the other one would be probably the same expense, except when we got through with the interior bathroom, jackhammering up all the floor and everything. Then we get to replace all of it, and then put in a new bathroom, and then put in new kitchen plumbing, instead of just putting a bathroom out on the
Thank you.
Seven-by-12-foot room, add on to this garage, which has no entrance to it other than the roll-up panel for the garage. So that's what I'm after, common sense, nothing else.
Thank you so much. We will close the public hearing, and I will turn, this is in Council District Four, so I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, this is for staff. Can you give, for the record, just the process of how this has gone through and how it reached to us, or how it got here?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember. So again, this went to the Historic Preservation Hearing Officer for a hearing on March 1st. And at that time, the Hearing Officer approved the application but with six stipulations, one of which was to repair the roof back to its original form, and the second was to move the addition from the front of the house to either the side or the rear. There were four other fairly minor stipulations that I don't believe the applicant is objecting to, I think it's just those two primary objections. And then following the Hearing Officer's decision on March 1st, there was an appeal to the Historic Preservation Commission, who heard the case on April 17th. They upheld the Hearing Officer's decision with the six full stipulations, and then that decision has been appealed to you for the hearing today.
Okay, so it got approved first time around with nine stipulations, then it got, the next step was an appeal?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it was approved with six stipulations. Staff had originally recommended nine.
Nine, and then it got approved.
But the Hearing Officer approved six of those nine.
And then it got approved by six.
Correct.
And then after that, once it got approved by six, didn't accept one and two, and so now it's being appealed to us.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I have several letters from the community within that area talking about the integrity of the structure and the integrity of a new addition being built. Can you speak to that?
I'm not entirely certain what's in the correspondence that you've received, but from a staff perspective, the house is in somewhat poor condition. Obviously, the tree has fallen on the roof, that definitely needs to be repaired. I think the question is the best way to do that, just to do a simple gable or to do the staggered gable that existed historically. There's other issues too, as we understand, from neighbors who are concerned about the condition. The home needs work, I understand there's been some concerns about activities in the rear yard and things that have taken place there. But from an historic preservation standpoint, the house does still retain sufficient integrity to contribute to the historic district. We are concerned, though, that if the addition is built on the front and the roof is not rebuilt as it was historically, that the historic integrity could be lost.
Okay, and it's a contributing?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it is a contributor to the Woodley Historic District currently.
Okay, my other understanding, and I don't know if, is that someone was hired to remove the tree. They were removing the tree and the tree fell onto the home.
That is my understanding as well.
My understanding is that they weren't experts in tree removal completely, especially the type of tree that was being removed, and then that incident happened. The other piece that I, concerning letters were that there's an individual living in the backyard who could possibly be homeless or a squatter in there. And those are, these are some, I got three different letters regarding this, and that there's no plumbing or bathroom, and it has been verbalized that individuals are using a bucket in the backyard. And then earlier this year, a fire was started by someone in the backyard. So it is in disarray. My concern is that adding a new addition, if all the other pieces are not into play, could really damage or destroy the home. So I am going, I'm going to uphold the HP Commission's decision on the certificate appropriateness, which include the six stipulations. That is my motion.
All right, we have a motion to uphold the AP Commission's Certificate of Appropriateness decision, we have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item 150, which is the northwest corner of 27th Avenue and Baseline Road. We will begin this item with a brief staff report, and then we will open a public hearing. We have five members of the public to testify, all have registered in support of the project, two to testify only if necessary, and we'll introduce our Planning and Development Director, Josh Bennerick.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With me this afternoon is Russell Escalar, Principal Planner on our Long Range Planning Team. Russell will provide an overview of the request. Russell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Item number 150 is the dash 74 dash 22 dash eight, a request to rezone, sorry. A request to rezone 9.78 acres located north of the northwest corner of 27th Avenue and Baseline Road. The request is to rezone from S1 Ranch or Farm Residence District to R110 Single Family Residence District to allow a single-family residential subdivision. Here's the rezoning area. This is the proposed site plan, which shows a total of 16 lots plus an additional existing lot labeled as not a part, however, it is a part of the rezoning application, just not a part of the proposed subdivision. So the result would be a total of 17 lots in the rezoning area. The existing large lot has an existing home on it, and lot number 16 proposed on this plan at the upper right side there is currently permitted and under construction under the current S1 zoning. The building elevations show an example of the home products that would be developed in the subdivision. The applicant provided both a modern contemporary design concept and traditional design. The Levine Village Planning Committee recommended approval per the staff recommendation with modifications by a seven-to-zero vote, and the Planning Commission recommended approval per the Levine Village Planning Committee recommendation with a modification by a five-to-two vote. The Planning Commission modified a stipulation to allow the 17 lots as shown on the site plan. Staff recommends approval per the Planning Commission recommendation and adoption of the related ordinance.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We will open the public hearing. Again, we have five folks registered to speak, all registered in support. We'll begin with Joe, oh, no, I'm sorry, we will begin with Larry, followed by Lydia.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilpersons. I'm the owner, principal owner of the properties there. My family's been out there on the site for over 40 years, and keeping in line with what was part of the original plans for the Levine area development was somewhat larger lots, and this is what our proposal is. Based on that, the 15-home development that we were defining there was primarily to come up with larger lots, limited thoroughfare through there, so we designed the cul-de-sac approach for that. There had been some resistance relative to that traffic coming in and out of that one cul-de-sac road that we felt was an appropriate way to develop the property. Part of our approach here also was, this is not starter home type of development. The homes that we look to produce here are for people who are relatively well-established, and we feel that it's, even though there is a need for additional housing for all levels of, within the community, we feel that there's also a need for the proper socio-economical mix within our community as well. So with that in mind, we seek your approval for this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia is next, followed by Francisco.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and, my name is Lydia Teresa Dickinson. I'm a current resident on the property and a future owner of one of the properties. I am one of the owners of the project also. It's basically myself, my other half, his parents, AKA Tata and Grammy, and my two young girls. It's been, we are trying to create the neighborhood that we want to live in. I wanted to have some neighbors, and I wanted to have trick-or-treaters. It's important to note that we aren't developers, we're trying to squeeze every little dime out of a square, per square foot. Besides creating the neighborhood that I wanted to create, I wanted a mid-century modern neighborhood that was a hidden gem that would build on putting South Phoenix on the map. It was natural for us to create an entrance on Ellis, which was already a half-street. I want to live on a quiet cul-de-sac, that was, this was a perfect setup. I want to address that there is some neighborhood opposition. There was no malice in us placing the one home in the corner. We had already had those plans started, and when we found out that there was opposition after. So I have reached out to the opponents and tried to cooperate, but there is no other area for us to create a new entrance. I did approach a commercial property, and they weren't willing to sell. I believe that the project is an asset to the community. The city has made the, has shown that the traffic would be minimal impact, and the 15 homes compared to the 799 homes that are in the neighborhood to the west, I think is minimal impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco is next, and then Joe and Tracy are registered to speak if necessary, so I'll ask if they still wish to speak.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Francisco Vade, and I'm the project manager for this project. We had quite a bit of opposition regarding the ingress egress or the entrance to the subdivision, but based on traffic analysis, based on the size of the lots themselves and the size of the subdivision, there's actually not a requirement for a traffic analysis to be done on this. One of the things that they want us to do is to provide an exit or ingress on 27th Avenue, which is not possible based on the existing residents as well as the residents on the construction that's pretty much 99% complete. The homeowner tried contacting the adjacent parcels on the south to see if he can actually purchase them right away, but nobody wants to sell because by selling a piece of land a 50-foot wide, that reduces their value on the front inch on Baseline Road. So this is actually a real small subdivision, only 16 lot, okay? It is, they were 17 lots, but in reality, only 14 lot, no, let me see, 15 lots will be ingressing and egressing out of that existing right-of-way on the cul-de-sac. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Do Jan and Joe, let's see, do, I'm sorry, do Joe and Tracy still wish to testify? All right, come on down.
Yeah, my name's Joe Genuzi, I'm a neighbor of the subdivision, we live about 300 feet away. I think this is the type of infill project we need to have more of in the city. It's some larger lots in bigger areas with wider sidewalks that actually allow a trash truck to drive down it while you have cars parked out on the street, which we really need to pay attention to when the city plots are being developed, because way too many of these neighborhoods are being jammed in with very small, very small streets, very high density. Actually, having one that's got a little more space is really, really nice. So please approve it, and let's build a better future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Tracy Riggs, and I live three properties to the north. I also happen to be a registered professional engineer in the state of Arizona, focusing on the transportation industry currently. Looking at the size of this subdivision and the peak hour traffic that it would generate even going into a residential street is essentially negligible. I feel like the concerns coming from the property subdivision to the west, there's really nothing for them to worry about in relation to additional traffic that might be coming from this. As Joe said, this really is the kind of infill project that we want to see in Levine because we are very quickly losing the rural feel of the whole reason that we live where we live. We're never going to get back to that, but we can claw a few little pieces here and there. There's a very similar project to the north called The Groves, which is also a cul-de-sac. It serves about 10 to 12 lots, so this is very much in keeping, and it also provides a very good buffer between the high-density lots that are in existence and the very low-density S1 that you're seeing to the south. So we would very much love to see this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final speaker. We'll close the public hearing. This item is in Council District Eight, so I will turn to Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, I had just one follow-up question on slide two. The 27th Avenue, because all of the objections, the majority of the objections I've received in my office have dealt with having a singular egress and ingress, and it's my understanding that the 27th Avenue is not an option, not simply because there is a structure, but also because the property, yes, that some of the property actually belongs to the county, is that, can you, can you expound on that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, you can see on the aerial there, the notch on the northern end highlights where the city boundary begins and ends, and so just south of where the lotch goes out into the middle of the right-of-way, that's, 27th Avenue is part of the city of Phoenix, but just to the north it is not. It, it's not, it's, it would, it would serve as another obstacle. The city wouldn't have control about how that intersection or that driveway would get built, so it certainly would make it difficult to have some level of confidence about the ingress and egress from the subdivision, which makes the which makes the proposed, uh, ingress and egress the most appropriate location.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to ask one more question regarding timing. That is also another objection that I received, um, is questioning whether the, the, um, single-family residence being, um, built on Lot Fifteen. I just want you to clarify that the application for the rezoning came after, um, the prior construction had been approved on Lot Fifteen.
Councilmember Hodge Washington, um, yes, that is correct. Um, we actually, uh, were not aware that the permits were already issued and the home was under construction until well after the application was received for rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification in light of those comments and the comments received here in the public. Thank you. I move that we, I get it? Move that we approve per the, per the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Just one.
Councilwoman Stark?
Outstanding job. He didn't use a zoning attorney. I commend you. That's good neighborhood work.
Councilwoman Pastor?
I just like the fact that you're preserving, I mean, it's, it's a ranch area. And, uh, knowing the property over time and have watched it be built, uh, I like the fact that it is a cul-de-sac and, uh, you still keep the neighborhood, uh, feeling and, um, and kind of ranchy. Kind of, you know, you still, you still have the horse, uh, plots still there, trying to still maintain and preserve, but, uh, understand that area very well. And, uh, congratulations.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
That concludes today's agendized portion of our meeting. We will next go to the citizen comment portion and I'll turn to our city attorney to explain this portion.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern. The citizen comment session is limited to thirty minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We'll begin with individuals here in person, beginning with Aura Crush, followed by Beatrice Johnson.
Hello, Mayor and everyone else on the seat. My name is Aura Crush and my concern is the way Arizona is being ran. I have been here sixty-plus years. I have seen, I have read, and I have noticed different strokes for different folks. This stems from an aunt of mine slash sister that was killed with her boyfriend and nothing has happened, it's been a year plus. I have seen people that don't show up to court. And what happened is that they get picked up with a warrant and they stay in jail. I have seen that when you have a court date, that you're supposed to go in there, not do, uh, over the phone with your lawyer that don't want him to hear what we have, which stems from victims' rights. Do victims have rights in Arizona? Is my question. The other question is, how can someone loved one has not been told that their loved ones is gone? I watch TV. I know the first thing they do. They check their accounts, their addresses, home numbers, et cetera. Well, I was the one on my aunt's thing. I did not read a phone call, mail, anything, police knock at the door, any of those things, when everything was coming to my address. It's hardening to have to do a welfare check every week as I did for someone to tell me, "You didn't hear about it? She passed away like eight days ago." And you know, after that court, you have to run around trying to find out and figure out where she is because she's in the morgue. And then they tell you, "You only had two more days," or they was going to do what they do to people that have not been accounted for. So I'm just saying, I always brag about Phoenix, Arizona, because like I say, I'm a native. But for the last year or so, not because of just doing to me, I'm seeing a whole lot of things that's done different for different people. And I feel like that's not fair. So I am asking that, you know, we all be created equal. And like they said on the, when everybody put their little hands to their chest this morning, when we started this afternoon, the declaration, I wish we could go and follow that for everyone and not be selective. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatrice is next, followed by Robert Dale, who will be our final speaker.
I would ask you not to turn my mic off today, please. Um, my name is Beatrice X. Johnson and I am the baby sister of Dorothy Jean Dale Chambers. And again, I have just gotten off a plane to come to the city council meeting. I say her whole name because the city of Phoenix, the police department, the mayor, city council, and especially the vice mayor, uh, who will need to know this name in this lifetime, for a lifetime, say her name. Last week I was cut off. It was very rude after I watched hundreds, nearly a hundred of people speak and go over the time sum up to forty-five seconds. I went back to watch, uh, but, but for me, I was interrupted as I was sharing, um, that I would not be finishing my whole statement. And I think that was very rude. And, um, I just want to say, I will continue to say her name, Dorothy Jean Dale Chambers. She was murdered by Nabaska Pekovic, who was a no-show for a arraignment hearing on February seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Phoenix police arrested him on March first, twenty twenty-three. Somehow, with two counts of seriously body injury with death and a failure to appear in the first degree, he was released on March second without seeing a judge. Our victims' rights were violated once again. His bail was made on March sixth, not on the first. Where they do that at? Apparently here in Phoenix. His bail was made five days later. How did that happen? Nabaska Pekovic was a no-show for April twenty-sixth court hearing. Your city prosecutor, Hillary, your city judge, uh, who Hillary made clear in court was her friend, uh, decided that it was okay for him not to be in court, even though there was no pre-arrangement. He just did not show up. I had to tell her to say something about it. She was going to let court continue until I told her to say something. Adding salt to the wound, the, the prosecutor office called me yesterday to see if we oppose his defense attorney having a continuation for the twenty-sixth. This man has never, ever been to court. He killed two people. He should have been arrested that night. We have traveled, we have been at every court procedure, and we will continue to come till he is held accountable. We want him to be held accountable for killing two people while he was speeding under the influence and he flunked a sobriety test. And the officer said he showed signs of impairment and the Phoenix police did not give him a blood test. They did not arrest him. They did not do their job. So our family continues to have to fight. This is not right. If it was anybody else, he would be in jail. He would have already been sentenced. We one year and two months and it's still going on and we will be back. Say her name, Dorothy Jean Dale Chambers.
Thank you. Robert will be our final speaker.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, my name's Robert Dale. I'm, uh, the oldest brother of Dorothy Jean Chambers, uh, Dale. And, uh, I'm, I'm a resident of Arizona for all my life. I'm seventy years old. I've had, been on the other side of the law. So I know how the law is supposed to work. I know how it works for me. Why doesn't it work for everybody equally? Why does no protocol kick in? When two people are murdered in the street, you have laws, you have protocols. And none of those, uh, protocol kicked in. Uh, uh, there, there was no blood test, no, uh, uh, none of that stuff. And in, in spite of, uh, people saying that he was impaired and he was driving like a madman and, and nobody bothered to, uh, make sure that they covered all the bases as far as him being drunk or impaired or whatever. The, uh, I had to find out by calling the police department and he told me out his own mouth that I'm the first one he heard of from my side of the family. And this was nine days since she was, uh, gone and, and in the morgue and, and had nobody claim her as a, a, a family or someone to care for. So I would like to know, why does the law not apply to everyone equally? Why does he, what, what does he have over Phoenix in particular to give him a pass for all the protocols that, that's supposed to be adhered to in this kind of situation? That's all I have to say.
Uh, thank you for your testimony. That is all of our speakers for today. We are adjourned.
We're interested in participated in creating, in creating the works of art. On one of the walls, you can see many of their original sketches reproduced so that you can sort of see how they went. You look from the rock art that they saw in a, to their own sketches, which were then produced by the, um, the experts who can cut metal. Another set of drawings you can see is inspired by a, a, a piece of pottery that one of the artists saw that's in the collection at Pueblo Grande Museum, one of our great Phoenix art and culture sites. All those things are made out of copper, all those medallions. But you can't see them shining like a copper penny because of, uh, the miracles of air and air pollution and chemicals. They all have a patina all over them. So they...